Evening, everyone. The November 9th, 2021 minutes. Agenda item.
Evening. It's here, thrower. And so they cleaned up around the lake and then they enjoyed nature.
That is really an accomplishment.
Thank you for having me.
Well, it's seconded by Vice Chair King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish they not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Progression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements.
But I am asking on behalf of the children that Not us, we're a family. Marion County, I researched it before we moved here and I am grateful to put this money to work to good use. The schools need more money put into. Ask for funding, ask for, ask for it, go to a higher power. We got two of the greatest men in the world living right here and the great sunshine, excuse me, Sunshine State, DeSantis and Donald Trump. We are a great state. This is a great, Marion County's big, huge, and we got it going on. Let's just do a little more, if we can just pull a little more in for our children, for the busing transportation. It's dangerous to me for a bus driver, and my view, for a bus driver to do one route and she's picking up the junior high children and she unloads those children and then the high school kids are waiting, they're waiting for their ride. Excuse me, but the last time I checked, I paid taxes and, um, in this area, if I could address it, and nothing personal, but I think, well, without
Ma'am, really appreciate you coming out tonight.
Mm-hmm, thank you for having me. It's been a pleasure.
You do have my card, right?
Yes, ma'am, I got it right here. I have several cards. Thank you, all are wonderful.
Awesome, thank you.
Mr. Robert Schmidt?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, board members. My name is Robert Schmidt, 11 SCHMIDT, 11488 Southwest 82nd Court Road, Ocala, Florida. Just to take just a moment, I do agree that probably bus drivers are probably some of the most underappreciated, um, you know, members of our school system. And I must admit that I remember the days when I was taking the bus and they faced a lot of challenges back then and my guess is those challenges have done nothing more than amplify themselves in today's environment. So anyhow, so my comments tonight are regarding COVID. And I'm just going to go ahead and read through them so I don't stumble through my speech, okay? So our, basically, we've all become aware of the recent availability of the COVID vaccine to our youth, okay? I think that there's sufficient medical science for parents to be the ultimate decision makers. All one has to do is look at the real figures to determine the actual risk to youth under the age of 18. And in my opinion, Americans have been hoodwinked regarding the efficacy, durability, and the risks associated with the shots. Too many parents will not, will not be, this will not be an issue to many parents. And to others, this is going to be a big, significant issue, okay? And may take, and want to take a different action on vaccines, okay? My question is, what is the school board doing and the adminis- school administration doing to ensure parents and the students and doctors maintain the sole authority for what happens and their decisions? What will be done to assure parents they have the primacy in the medical decisions for their students? Does the school board and school administration take the passive approach to vaccine administration? Or is there going to, where they consider attendance to be, um, attendance to being consent? Or will the school board take more of a forward-leaning, active action to consent, okay? Is there any risk that a student one day will walk home vaccinated even though the parents and that student have not made that decision? Is there going to come the opportunity where that student comes home and says, mommy, daddy, guess what happened to me today? I got vaccinated. And then these parents are there in horror, sitting there looking down the end of their, what happened today? What went wrong, okay? Has the school board thought through, and my guess is that you probably have given this some consideration, this is not something that you're being caught flat-footed on, okay? So my comments are probably nothing more than amplifications of things that you've already thought about so far, okay? So, um, have you thought through how these vaccines will be rolled out? What is going to be the process and procedures for keeping those individuals that make that decision private or decide not to do it? What is going to be the privacy that's involved with that? So that we don't involve, we don't get to this two-tiered system within our school system. That's what we're trying to avoid here, okay? I think we can see how all this can be very divisive and we don't want that to be in our school system. That's the last thing we need in our school system. Will the school board sanction vaccination campaigns within the school system? Those are all good questions that parents are going to want to know. Those are things that I think of and I'm certainly, I'm certain that I'm not the only one thinking about these things as we start to approach these issues. I realize that the school board and the school administration comes at, comes at these issues from different vectors, okay? Everybody's got a different approach to the same issue. And so I want to make sure that there's, um, that there is a assurance to parents that regardless of what their decision is, that that decision is theirs and that it is going to be private and that it doesn't become a political or any other kind of football, okay? That's what we're, that's what we're after here. So, in closing, um, I can honestly think of no issue that will probably divide our student body more than parents being caught flat-footed with the, with these vaccination issues, okay? And we want to keep that out of the school system. And so this is nothing more than to get you thinking that, get you thinking along those lines of what potentially we're going to see. We've seen it in other parts of the country, not suggesting that it's going to happen here, but it could happen, but let's be proactive and let's avoid those issues altogether, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further? Okay, thank you. Didn't know if we had any last minute. May I have a motion to adopt the 2021-2022 Student Progression Plan? Moved by Board Member Campbell?
Seconded.
Seconded by Vice Chair King. Dr. Gullett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The 2021-2022 Student Progression Plan will reflect the changes in legislation in order to be in compliance with Florida Statute 1008.25 and to clarify language concerning student progression in Marion County.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the 2021-2022 Student Progression Plan? Seeing none? Board, is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items C7.1 through C20.1 with the exception of Item C7.1 that has been pulled and placed under discussion? Moved by Vice Chair King, seconded by Board Member Campbell. All those in favor say aye.
I'd like to have a discussion, Madam Chair.
We're getting to that, this is just to approve the motion, to pull it.
Oh, to pull, to pull one?
We will be discussing.
Yes, fine, thank you.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Board Member Campbell, I believe you pulled this item? Yes, ma'am.
Um, so I, as we look at the tentative board preparation calendar there, and this was Item C7.1, there were a couple of notes that I made on it and was curious to know if we wanted to make some adjustments. So the first thing is indicated in our schedule that February 2nd through the 4th are FSBA days in the legislature. And currently, we have in this schedule a work session on February 3rd. Because last year, I know the Capitol was not open for visitation, but it will be this year. So with this being my first year that the Capitol is open, I didn't know when traditionally our school board goes to Tallahassee if we go during FSBA days or if we go at a different time. And so if we do go during FSBA days, I would like to see if we could potentially move the agenda items on the February 3rd date to another date and potentially cancel that February 3rd work session so that we could go up over FSBA days. But again, that's, I'm not certain when we typically go up as a board, but I know that's something that I think we would like to do again.
Yes, ma'am. Board?
In the past, we, we went up.
Yeah, we usually do go up. I don't know when those dates
It's the 2nd through the 4th.
Isn't it like a Tuesday, Wednesday or something like that? That's what I remember.
It is the 2nd through the 4th that we're scheduled to go and this has happened before. I am fine with that. I would just want to ask Dr. Gullett to review the items for that work session and then please get back with the, with the chair about which items should be moved where based on any deadlines that may be embedded in those items and, and things of that nature, but.
And I did have one other thing in the, in the calendar as well, but that would be great if we could figure out the February 3rd thing so potentially we could all be in Tallahassee as much as possible.
Are we all good with that?
Yes.
I am. You're good? Okay.
And the only other thing in the schedule that I noted was in June, actually, because of the way the month of June falls with the 1st happening at a strange time and so our second, our, our board meeting and work session actually happened a day apart on the week of June 14th with June, June 14th school board meeting, June 16th work session. So I didn't know if we wanted to move that June 16th work session to the 23rd. So it does put us on that off schedule. So we have a work session one week, a board meeting the next week, and, and vice versa. That was, that's the only one that I saw like that and it just happens to fall where we have a board meeting and a work session within a day of each other.
You know, it also comes to question is, is when is
FSBA summer.
FSBA in summer.
June 8th through the 10th.
Right, so it's the week before.
10th, okay.
Right.
My calendar must be incorrect because I actually showed that we had work sessions on the 9th and 23rd.
Well, this is the schedule that we're going to be approving tonight, so that's why I pulled it for discussion because we haven't, I don't know that we've actually set the full schedule for the 2022 year. So just if we were wanting to potentially move the June 16th work session to the 23rd, then that would again put us on that off schedule and keep us at FSBA the week before and then have a, a board meeting on the 14th and a work session on the 23rd and then a board meeting again on the 28th.
Makes sense.
I don't have a problem with that in, in theory. I am looking at the different items and just something that I'm reflecting on is that that is getting us towards the end of the fiscal year. So I want to make sure that whatever presentations and again, you know, statutory deadlines and requirements, that we're meeting those and not leaving things till the last minute and having anything be rushed. So that would be my only thing. Other than that, I'm fine.
The only thing on the, the calendar right now is just school planning update on the 16th is what's, so Alaina does a pretty good job of showing us what we need to have when and so the only thing on that particular work session date is just school planning update, but I don't know if that is a timeframe.
I'm comfortable leaving it that week because also it's the end of the month and our employees start taking vacation time and it's the 4th, you know?
Yeah.
And with the fiscal year, they're, I'm comfortable if we just leave it alone as it's presented to us, just for those couple reasons, you know? I don't know.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Are we, we're able to adjust this along the way too. If we do set, if we do adjust it as Ms. Campbell is indicating and then we want to make, say add an extra work session and we're able to do that, right?
Yes.
Yes, we are able to do many things. It would be my preference rather than move it, to consider moving it back, that since we're a long way from June, that we consider holding fast for now and seeing how things unfold and a little closer to the time, we can make that determination. If this last couple of years has taught me anything, it's that anything can happen. So we may want to just be mindful, again, this board has done an amazing job being proactive and, and making sure that we are fitting in everything and, and taking plenty of time to discuss and, and come to agreement. So I'm fine with leaving it for now, but I appreciate you pointing that out and I think that we do need to, to keep that in mind as a, as an option as we get a little bit closer to the time. Anyone else have anything else?
I'm happy with, with Ms. Campbell's indicate, uh, proposal.
Okay. Board Member Cummins?
I'm, I'm planning with changing the first one, but leaving the other one, leaving it alone.
Vice Chair King, I think I heard that you would like to leave it as it is for now?
Right.
Okay, all right. Well, it sounds to me like we will be definitely canceling the meeting, the work session on February 3rd to accommodate FSBA and that for now, we'll leave it as presented on the agenda. So Attorney Powers, do we need to vote on February 3rd and then the other items separately? Or?
And we need to say the amendment and then we vote?
Right.
Okay.
I move that we approve.
Should we do it the other way around?
So we're yard motion on the floor.
Most of them are in the fourth, so we
That's it.
Okay. Now I understand.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And I won't make the motion to move the June 16th date to June 20th.
Surveying our staff, actions, of course, you remember that we talked about what is our vision, what's that going to look like? And it was through those conversations that we established that our vision is helping every student succeed. It's that simple. That everyone in this community and on our district community is committed to making sure that every student is successful, wherever they come from, whatever their needs are. Everyone has a role in a place. So I think that's very powerful. It's very simple, but very powerful. And then we reexamined our, this big document here and key activities. And so it's really important that we focus in on our five goals. So if we can go to page six, I'll show that on the screen. That's on your page six. So these are our goals. This provides really our North Star for where we're going as a district. Earlier tonight about bus transportation and custodial services and lunchroom, everyone, part of a talented team and supporting them. We're focusing very intensely here on retention and recruitment of, of a high-quality and dedicated team. Goal four, fiscal and operational efficiency ensures that we're creating key performance indicators, known as KPIs, for our operations and making sure that throughout our operational team, that we, all of this from everything I've just described, as everyone, including the board, especially the board, for thinking out
Lord have mercy, 100%.
And contributing and
All of these metrics that we have, we have to have some baseline data so we can show where we're going to move and how we're going to make that movement. So we have
And carries it, you know, with us every single day. So that's been wonderful. From CC's wishlist. Shoes valued at $2,889.42 to Emerald Shore's Elementary School from CC's wishlist. Clothes, shoes, sheet sets, and folders valued at $1,682.45 to Pheasantin Elementary School from CC's wishlist. $3,000 to Forest High School from Daniel and Christina Schnorenberg. I hope I said that accurately. $7,916 to Fort McCoy School from Michael and Kathleen Smith. $4,050 to Fort McCoy School from Cactus Jacks 2 Incorporated. Clothes, shoes, basketballs, and markers valued at $1,091.15 to Greenway Elementary School from CC's wishlist. $1,500 to Hillcrest Public School from Jeffrey L. Sailor, CPA, PA. Gift cards valued at $4,962.4 to Hillcrest Public School from Rack Room Shoes. Children and adult clothing, shoes, bed sheets. $15,219.34 to Marion County Public Schools from CC's wishlist. $2,000 to Marion County Public Schools Food and Nutrition Services Department.
Keep them coming and we look forward to thanking you again.
Regarding names for committees for the textbook adoption
Lot of, a lot of resources. There are a lot of folks there that are really excited to help our families, to help students, so.
Many great and exciting things happening. It's, it's great to be able to get back to more typicality.
Yes, indeed.
Out and got that job done.
Little Errol.
One of the buildup, ad verum tax buildup, and we have a flat expense zone on a couple of things that have come to fore and that is in, in the past year or two, things have, there's a key just along, Ms. Allison had that, had her item pulled, but I would like to stop on almost anything. It's almost like sales tax in some places.
For all of the things that our community does for us, the Vanguard, we have, all of that comes out next week and I know there will be a lot of ample communication about that with the window opening next week and going through January. Are a part of that
Timeliness of buses and being on time and, and getting our kids to bus drivers. And we're looking for ways to get these kids to school because we understand that it's important that every minute that they can get, they can be in front of the teacher. That's vital. So we don't take that, I don't foresee that ever being an issue with us removing rights from parents and mandating a kid to get a shot, those things that were wrong in the strategic plan to, to make sure that the strategic plan did not fit just certain kids, but all kids. And it was When you're reading scripture and you see certain words that jump out of scripture and it jumps out more than one time, it's called the biblical principle, second mention. Well, I read everything and I read, that's, that's, that's the goals of this board. And then, just to move a little bit further, we do want to, the second goal on that was a safety. We know that, we know what happened last week with the young man and then there was also, I think the next day someone else got hit by a car, but they, they've survived. We think else happening like that, that tragedy that happened last week, we want to make sure that our kids get through the school year. And then, I'm closing on my last comment is on next week at 5:30 on the 16th, Howard Academy, the Black History Museum is going to have another reopening. I want to encourage everyone to please go out and join in this event. You would be surprised, the artifacts, actual artifacts that are there, that our county is rich in.
Bit. And one of the highlights that I took from yesterday is, you know, I think Michelle Stone is working on a, she's chairing a transportation initiative and, you know, there was some discussion about us working, you know, collaboratively also with, you know, buses and, and maybe we could work together on getting a good message out and, and that is all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair King.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. King. You reminded me, I did also want to say something about the golden apple. I'm on the teacher's side of it, so I will too be going to some schools. So congratulations to all of those that have made it thus far and thank you for Ms. King for that reminder.
Thank you. Um, yes, Dave Hurley, his name has come up multiple times tonight, but there's a reason for that. He just worked so hard to get that intergovernmental kick down the road, then you just have that much more to talk about and I'm sitting here looking at our policy notebook down on my left and you probably can't see it on the camera, so I guess I'll just show it to you because it's a pretty impressive
Young lady, do not hurt yourself.
Thank you, good thing I'm a horse girl. This is our, our policies that we will be reviewing over the next weeks. And it's been many years since that has happened and it's another example of how proactive this board really works to be. When, when we notice things, we, we bring them up and, and I think that part of the best things, some of the best things about this board is that, that we all have the interest of helping every student succeed at the core of our hearts. But we focus on different things, you know, and then we come together to move everything forward. You know, we all have our passions, we all have our interests and they all tie in to helping every student succeed. And, and I love that vision statement because I'll be able to remember it. Helping every student succeed. You know, some of these vision statements are 12 sentences long and if I walked up to, to an employee and said, what is our vision statement? They'd be like a deer caught in the headlights. And, and it reminds me of, of the big three, you know, do what's right, do your best, treat others the way you want to be treated. Couldn't be more straightforward than that. And, and that has stuck with me through these years. So helping every student succeed, I, I think is a wonderful vision and, and I know that, that we're going to get closer and closer to achieving that for each and every child. All does mean all. Moving on to bus driver appreciation, I had the, the pleasure of getting down to Liberty Middle School last week and got a chance to get there early and, and visit with, with the principal and she is just amazing, comes from a family of educators and I think three generations she was sharing with me. So that's special in and of itself and she even has, I think it's her grandmother's principal's bell on her shelf in her office and I guess when someone becomes a new principal, Dr. Gullett, they get a bell?
That's correct. The new, the bells are going to be distributed to the new principals, but we're going to keep that a surprise and not tell them when.
Uh-huh, okay.
Get out the bag.
Uh-oh.
I've been trying to, yes.
Good recovery, good recovery, Dr. Gullett, good recovery.
Well, what bell?
Okay. Sure that they brought, it's probably already been leaked.
Well, it's, it's easy to just be excited of all the good things that are happening in, in our school system. And that warm family atmosphere is something that I continue to hear about over and over and that's what's been the most missed, you know, during the shutdown and during the times that we had to be so separated, our, our staff is, is yearning, you know, to get back to that feeling. And with that in mind, I was on the health department call yesterday and when we started school, we were at, in the community, a 30% positivity rate. It was really traumatic because after a great summer, very low COVID numbers, we really thought we were past that. And then to have that acceleration right before the start of school just was so difficult. But, you know, we, we buckled down, battle-tested, not battle-weary and did what we needed to do and thankfully, we do to everyone's, you know, hard work and, and just the way the Delta virus has gone, you know, big spike and then down quickly, we are at a 3.3% positivity rate as of last week. And so the trend continues to go down and so it's an acknowledgement, but also I would say that it's time to get the band back together and let's get the board back upon the dais and make it easier for our tech folks. I, I think that that will make life much easier for them to have us all where we've typically been. I'd, I'd like to propose that we, you know, think about that. We've had several weeks now of, of really good success and it is important for our board to reflect, you know, what is happening in our schools. There is still the, the need and the mindfulness as far as the social distancing is concerned. The last thing we want to do is, is go backwards. We're moving into a time in Florida where people are going outside and up north, people are having to be inside. So I continue to remain very optimistic that our numbers are going to remain low. So I'd, I'd like for the board to think about that. And you don't have to answer me, you know, right now we have a reorganization meeting coming up anyway and we can decide have a reorganization meeting coming up anyway. And we can decide at that time how we want to move forward. But any opportunity we have to celebrate and bring things back to more typicality is is a good idea, in my opinion.
I'm in favor of that.
As am I.
Okay, well, that's great to hear. So and like I said, we can come to a definite decision at another time. I just wanted to bring it forward tonight and give everybody, each board member, a chance to to think and re and reflect on it. Getting back to Liberty, it was really wonderful to be with the principal and then also to go over to the bus compound. Again, speaking of bus driver and and bus aides and mechanic, very heavy lift, you know, we know that this is going on all across our country. I worked for Burger King in in high school, and the burgers have gotten a lot smaller, and the prices have gotten higher. And and you can do that in the private sector. In the public sector, you know, we get the money that each of us as taxpayers, you know, pay in and from our federal sources. But it is a finite amount of money. And guess what? We have to have a balanced budget. We don't do deficit spending. So my point is, is that when the going gets tough for us, we can't just raise our price prices and make our burgers smaller and say, hey, kids that have unique needs, we're not going to serve you anymore because it's costing us too much money. So I think that is important to keep in mind, that the the public sector and the private sector are very different in in that way. That being said, it continues to be our commitment on the fiscal side to all other up, as we continue to honor our family culture, and as we continue to deliver as a school board what we said we were going to do. And I'm confident that we'll continue to do that. So those are my comments for tonight. And I really appreciate everybody's continued commitment to helping every student succeed. Seven, J D twenty-two.
Numbers are so large that you're aware of.
This is just too many. I have to I have to say it. It's too many.
From the realm of that if a student does what they're required to do, then they have the opportunity to come before us for early reentry. And it's a hearing and the things that they should never even know exist, in my opinion, but.
I have a few that made bad decisions, but that was their choice.
Address Ms. Kelly.
We're going to go ahead and hear what he has to say first.
We are, huh? Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, board members, board chair, thrower.
And in any organization, in any structure.
These are level four offenses. And I use and the stuff that they did in here.
Does become magnified. That being said, the best we want to do is set up a student for further failure.
Where we're, we see less, because we've got, like our psychologists, we've got this, we've got a great superintendent, we've
Some of these that some of them, the all. And so I know that we're going to continue to massage that and look in how we can